So I'll call the meeting of this special board meeting of May 29 to order. By executive order and 29/20 issued March 18, 2020, the Newport Mesa Board of Education will be closed to the public. The public may watch the meeting by joining the Zoom webinar at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Newport Mesa. N M U S D dot zoom dot U S forward slash J forward slash nine three seven two four six one one two nine. Habrá interpretación a la española a través del mismo enlace de Zoom. So we'll do roll call.
Ms. Flor.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Bartow.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Great. Adoption of the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Move adoption of the agenda.
I'll second, Ms. Bartow.
Ms. Yelsey moves, Mrs. Bartow second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor. Ms. Yelsey. Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Bartow.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Community input on special agenda items only. I want to remind the public that is in that per the Brown Act, special meetings only have public comment on agendized items only. Any topics submitted that are not on the agenda have been deleted. I also want to let you know that this is a study session on the budget for 2021. Therefore, comments that were submitted relative to current budget allocations have been moved to the meeting. And we have kept them and we will keep them and we will put them on for the but the agenda coming up on June 12th, I believe it is. So, oh, I apologize, I thought my, so I just want to let everybody know about that. Ms. Ms. Black, would you read the public comments statement, please?
Sure. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the special meeting agenda only. Each speaker has three minutes of comment read time and per board policy nine three two three, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full in the meeting video record. Electronic comment cards must be submitted no later than 7:30 a.m. on Friday, May 29th, using the following links.
Ms. Flor, just a just a quick clarification. I believe you mentioned a date and I'm assuming that's was in reference to the next.
Board board meeting.
Is June 9, June 9.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Wasn't quite sure, but I knew it was coming up soon.
June 9.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so Ms. Anderson, you have the very first one, please.
Yes. Um, my comment is from Tamara Fairbanks, the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers President-elect and Britt Doughty, the current NMFT president. Dear Newport Mesa trustees, today you will be holding a study session for the district budget. NMFT recognizes the economic uncertainty created by the COVID-19 pandemic news that California will slash its budget significantly. Our union hopes you will share the same priorities as our members. Collectively, we support creating a safe environment for employees and students, ensuring job security for the persons providing essential instruction and support for our students, offering high quality and affordable health and welfare benefits to employees, and protecting salaries of educators during uncertain times. You may recall that NMFT shared a multi-year comparison of the district's budget and unaudited actual financial statements with each of you on October 29, 2019. The document included information from 2014, 15 through 2018, 19. Attached to this email is a version including 2010, 11 through the first interim report of 2019, 20. The report was compiled by CFT based on public records. Their analysis highlighted budget line items that have expenses significantly below budgeted amounts over several years. Their analysis also shows some key sources of money that can be flexibly used during times of economic uncertainty to help support the general fund of the district. NMFT would like to partner with the district in communication to employees. We know the district has the safety needs of employees and students as its first mission and high quality instruction as the next priority. We know the district wants to keep any budget cuts as far away from the classroom and direct support services to students as possible. We hope the attached information helps inform your important work developing a budget for next year. In unity, Britt Doughty, educational doctor at Tamara and Tamara Fairbanks from Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, 1794.
Thank you. Ms. Bartow. I believe you have the next one.
This is from Cynthia Blackwell. Budget review needs to include a deep dive into all of the legal fees associated with workers' comp. As I shared in person at a previous board meeting, your W C firms love to send out frivolous notices. It was five years ago yesterday that I was injured in my classroom, still trying to be made whole. On another financial note, will age 65, high-risk staff be placed on leave due to COVID-19? How will that affect their service credit? How many employees fall into this category?
Thank you. Ms. Black. You're on mute, Ms. Black.
Okay, sorry about that. Trustees, in in order to meet critical needs of the students, hopefully this and in the fall, you need to make some major cuts in your budget. All executives receiving $200,000 to $400,000 should take at least a 10% pay cut. Lawyer fees of over $800,000 should be drastically cut. Consultant fees of over $800,000 should be cut. Conference and travel fees of over $300,000 should be deleted. Mileage stipends of $1,000 to $8,000 should be deleted. The $10,000 food budget for school board members should be at least cut in half. $50 per person is plenty of food. Cut the $1,360,000 transportation budget by $1 million and return all students to their neighborhood school. A short list of how spend this money, that money. Plexiglass thermometers, face mags, hand sanitizers, et cetera. Add more teachers to meet smaller class size and to help students who academically behind before the pandemic shutdown. Provide a community facilitator at every school to deal with the lack of internet services. Parents needing multiple help with articulation, communication with school officials, possible food insecurity, housing, emotional problems, special education and others. Support a strong summer school program to include pre-K, kindergarten and at and at-risk first and second graders, particularly for the 10,769 economically disadvantaged students in this district. Provide a mental health facilitator at every school to deal with emotional trauma of students and teachers. Provide an onsite nurse at every school to prevent the further spread of the virus. Two, 2020 is the perfect time to reorder the district priorities and develop a budget which has students at its core.
Great, thank you. I have the next one, which is from Mrs. Mrs. Leece. Madam President and trustees of the school board, I have six comments pertaining to the budget. You have an opportunity to restructure the budget based on necessities for student success in the classroom in this brand new chapter of public education. I implore you to cut far, far away from the classroom. It's time for you to get rid of the fat and cut to the bone so all students have abundant opportunities to become all that they can be destined to be in the in life. This, that means also that you must cut at Bear Street. Please be ruthless, send money to the classroom. Two, house cleaning. Examine all contracts where vendors slash consultants are paid by retainer. Decide if the scope of each done is necessary under these new circumstances and amend the contract to pay only for specific time and materials. Three, finally, the endowment from the Irvine Company. Policy 6140 was amended on February 25, 1997, when I was a trustee. The board voted unanimously to implement amended board policy 6140 to complete the elementary library automation and for the staff to use the rest of the money for programs under the enhancement definition. The definition of enhancement was approved on April 29, 1997. Per the amendment, enhancement means any program or activity which increases the educational opportunities for students above and beyond the board's adopted curriculum may be considered for funding from the Irvine Company's endowment fund. In 1997, the list of items from the endowment fund totaled $1,7200. At that time, the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and employee groups made recommendations for the 97, 98 budget. Six, we need to restore the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. And or that was five, sorry. The Irvine Company Endowment has really has has nearly $14 million dollars from accrued interest from the original $6 million from the tick given to N M U S D in the early 90s. It must be used only to enhance educational opportunities for all students. I challenge you to come up with many creative educational enhancements for all kids who have weathered COVID-19. And finally, that is for the Irvine Company had in mind, the tick did not intend the money to be sit there, gain interest and not be used. Kids deserve better, more than more than ever. Thank you. And Ms. Matoye.
Okay, this is from Lori Smith, resident and trustee Bartow's area, area five. Question number one. L A Unified and Long Beach Unified and others have plans ready to help make up for lost learning caused by the pandemic. Theirs will be held remotely in four-week blocks and focus on basics like math, reading, ELD for English learners, along with special classes targeting struggling students and include some enrichment. In summer school, in the budget, is the in summer school and the budget plan for Newport Mesa's needy student? Let me read that again, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith. Is summer school in the budget plan for Newport Mesa's neediest students? If so, what is the plan? Specifically, have you identified those students while teachers and community facilitators are available? To help?
You go on.
Okay. Will you check that they all have internet access, Chromebooks and other learning materials? Will you do a needs assessment of families to help match them with our community resource organizations? Question number two. Schools are facing cuts while costs increase due to COVID prep for reopening. We are better off as a basic aid district with healthy reserves. How much of our unused reserves will you tap to protect direct services to students in classrooms? Meaning, will you maintain smaller class sizes, student academic programs like science, art and music, as well as support programs? Even more important at this time, when an unprecedented national health and economic crisis is hitting our students and families, will you do whatever it takes to fund additional licensed professional counselors, school nurses and community facilitators? We know kids can't learn if they aren't healthy. Considering there has never been a time of greater need for all our students and that things are now particularly worrisome for students who are already on the edge of personal or family crisis. Adding these professionals is critical. Please make it a top budget priority, along with planning summer school and guaranteeing protection of all funds that go directly to students. I'll look forward to seeing these suggestions implemented in the budget for 2021. Thank you, Lori Smith.
And ask Brad, who whose did Dana read? I couldn't, we couldn't hear.
Oh, hold on, I can tell you.
I read Marty O'Meara's.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. And again, I want to remind everyone that there were several comments submitted relative to this current year's budget and they have been held over to the June 9th board meeting and they will be there. So we will now move into the study section, a study session on the budget background, Dr. Navarro.
Yes, as I've shared with the board previously, this has been an incredibly collaborative process with all divisions and really proud of the teamwork that's gone on to identify the best solutions to provide a balanced budget for the coming year. There are so many unknowns. And we are making sure that all of the issues that we know about are contained in the assumptions that set the foundation for this budget. And I'd like to hand it off to the to our deputy soup and who will work with our chief financial officer to provide you with the presentation and the information on this. I just want to compliment both of them for working so many hours. Russell has been leading this, leading our team and Jeff has been an incredible resource to us. So, Mr. Lisa. All right, good morning, everybody. As Dr. Navarro said, this has been quite a challenge and a process and really appreciate everyone's work to get to this point. A lot of the comments that we heard from the public just a few minutes ago are some principles that we have considered in creating this recommendation. You'll hear from me a little bit more on that later on in the presentation, but I'd like to hand it off to Jeff Trader to kind of pick up where we left off at the last board study session on the budget to bring us all up to date where we are today and again, leading to our recommended solutions. So, Mr. Trader.
Could I interrupt really briefly? I just want to make sure that those comments that were related to this year's budget, people know that we will be getting back to them, even if it's not part of the this particular discussion. I just want to make sure that that's understood by the public watching.
Well, we, I think we'll cover almost everything in the presentation with the exception of a specific fund. But we've given that information to that speaker, but we'll follow up with that speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. We will share my screen here. Let's. Okay. So it's good to be here. Let's talk a little bit about what we're going to do today. Today we want to, we're going to give a general update from the last time that we met. Some few things have happened and so we'll update you on those things. We're going to again, review the guiding touchstones for budget adjustments and we'll take a look at their revenue challenge and discuss some of the recommended solutions for that. And then we'll conclude and we'll discuss some next steps. So let's talk about what's happened since our last study session that we had. Since then, the governor has published his May revised budget and it includes some significant impacts to the district. First of all, there's a 10% cut. And as Mrs. Snell pointed out recently, it's not really 10%. It's really seven, a 7.92% cut because the 10% is taken off from the scheduled 2.31% cola. And so although it's not yet clear how the state is going to deal with community funded districts like us, we can assume that the state will take the same position as they did in the Great Recession. And that means the state has multiple means of tapping our funding. They can first tap our minimum state aid, which is about 7.6 million. They can then go to our education protection account, which is about 4 million. They can then drill into our special ed apportionment, which is about 12 million. So you see, the state has some ample avenues to tap into our funding. Now, the state's also going to reduce our categorical funding and this is going to hit our nutrition services, our after-school program, Aces, our strong workforce grant and our career technical education. The state's also going to heavily use deferrals. And this means they're they can, they're going to delay funding, which will greatly impact our cash position. And you know, cash is really important, giving our community funded status because we we don't get regular apportionments. We, we, most of our cash comes from our property taxes and that follows a different schedule. And that means that we have a cash drive period between July and December. And so the state's delay of funding is going to compound this cash drive period. And so the interesting thing about cash is that it's actually the litmus test for insolvency. So the state's definition for insolvency is not having a negative net worth. It's really about not having cash to operate. And so not having cash to operate is the trigger for a state takeover. And so as such, we monitor cash very closely. And we hope to get through this next year without having to issue a tax revenue anticipation note or having to borrow from the county treasurer. So when we also last met, we were very concerned about our property tax performance. At that time, the county auditor controller had given us a 2% haircut on our tax revenue estimate. And 2% equates to $6 million for us. And that was very concerning. However, since we met last, the good news is, is the county posted our last secured payment and that 2% haircut did not come to fruition. However, we still, we still do not, do not know how COVID is going to impact the housing market. We understand sales volume has dropped off, however, prices have remained stable. So maybe there's some, some good news there, but the out-year estimates are pretty, we just don't know. And so we've remained conservative on our estimates going out year. And then there are a number of known unknowns. We don't know how the economy is really going to perform at this point. It's anyone's guess. Consumer spending was down 13% in April. However, there are signs that the economy is bottoming out, which is good news. However, the question is, you know, is it going to be a U-shaped recovery or is it going to be a swoosh? How elongated is the recovery going to be? We, we just don't know. So we are, we are planning, how do you say, for a conservative kind of approach to this. So we just, and then we also don't know how COVID-19 is going to impact our costs. So far, we have spent $2.3 million on COVID-19 and we have assumed a similar amount in 2021. So with that, then, let's talk about, here's a slide that you saw back in 2009, 10. And this was gathered from you. These were the guidance that we received from the board about how to approach cuts. And these were the touchstones related to them. Minimal disruption to program, modulated response and targeted surgical reductions. We've used these touchstones in coming up with our approach to the budget for 2021 and what we're going to have to do with that. So let's then talk a little about that. There are some realities, though, to these touchstones. And with almost 90% of our budget tied up in people, it underscores the fact that, you know, it takes people to teach people. And so when dealing with major revenue shortfalls, it's mathematically impossible to resolve the shortfall on the 10% of the budget essentially that keeps the lights on, the infrastructure. And with all of essentially, with all of the money in the classroom and our overappropriation of LCFF supplementary, we, which we don't get any money for, by the way, that leaves very few other options for us to go to. So however, you know, as you're going to see later on, as a matter of policy, the board has taken a very prudent course when it comes to finances. And the result of that is stability and and you'll see that as we move forward. So let's, let's move on now. Let's talk a little bit about our, our challenge that we have before us. So on the left-hand side in the red, you see the takeaways. These are the loss of, of, how do you say, incremental losses that we're going to have to deal with. And so the first item there, the 7.92% LCFF grant reduction, MSA 7.6 million. Let's talk a little bit about that. The state is going to level a 7.92% reduction to all districts based on the LCF grant. That equals $14.8 million for us. Now, we get a minimum state aid of 7.6 million from the state. It's pretty clear they're going to take all of that 7.6 million. And they could then blow all the way up through 14.8 million. And that's highly likely that's going to happen. We have COVID-19 expenses, we've scored already, we've spent 2.3 million in this year. In fact, we're going to have the same kind of experience in next year. We also have the categorical loss to our after-school programs, our strong workforce grant, our career technical education, nutrition services. We, we believe that's going to be about a half a million dollars to us that we have to figure out how to deal with that. We've also adjusted our property tax assumptions in the out-year slightly to be a little bit more conservative on that, given what's happening in the market now. And we've, we do know we have health and welfare and that could be about $1.3 million associated with that. So we have a total takeaway of about $19.9 million that we're going to have to figure out. Now, we also know that we're going to get some help. And on the right-hand side there, kind of in the black and the white, we do know we're going to get about $2.8 million from CARES. That's the federal act that was just passed. And that's fairly unrestricted money we can use to cover these kinds of expenses. We also know that the governor and the governor's budget, he has proposed Stirs and Purrs rate relief for the district. This is very welcome. This is going to be about $3 million to us. And then we also know that in the governor's budget, he has proposed raising the special ed 8602 rate, which will score about half a million dollars for us. So we have about $6.3 million of help that's going to come. So then we get to a net loss of $13.6 million. So this is, this is how we're going to, this is what we need to deal with. And with that, then, I'd like to ask.
Jeff, before you go to the next slide, let me interject here. Okay. Interject here. So you touched upon some of the touch points or touchstone points that the board used back in 2009. And I wanted to acknowledge that, but also expand on that as well because every crisis that we deal with, when it comes to the budget, there's some things that are very much in common that we want to utilize. And then there's some things that are unique. And this one has some unique features to it. And I want to highlight some of those before we get into the recommended solutions. And the first thing, as you know, this crisis was caused by the impact of COVID-19. So in our considerations, obviously, and I want to make very clear that the health and safety of our students and staff has to be supported within the budget. The other area is there are many services that support students and staff during this time and things such as mental health and health services. We're hearing from students, we're hearing from parents, we're hearing from staff, how critically important that is. It was important before the crisis and it's going to be incredibly important while we get through this crisis. So in our considerations, things like mental health and health services are being preserved and protected. Another example of that in our new normal is the, the importance of technology. So continuing to support the IT needs of the district. Educational technology is another area that needs to be protected and preserved. And anything related to the distance learning environment that likely we're going to be in and out of throughout the coming school year. The other thing that's really important that we also acknowledge is the challenge of the learning loss. And we know that summer support is only one piece of that. So we are working on plans to provide some support over the summer, but more importantly, support throughout the year. So distance learning support, intervention support is critically important. And what you're not going to see on the list is the fact that we are continuing to support our intervention programs at the elementary level. We have wonderful intervention programs supported by hourly certificated teachers that we will continue to support that on the general funded positions. We also continue to support some additional intervention classes that we provide at the secondary level. We also will provide summer support for students who end up with an incomplete mark at the end of the grading period. So we have a committee that's currently working on that, and we want to make sure that we support that. But overall, like we've heard with the board back in 2009, we continue to do this to really minimize any reductions or impact to students and to the classroom. We also took an approach of what is, and making sure that we are supporting core, which also includes the electives, and, and, and also making sure that the supplemental support is the key supplemental support that we need to continue. Another item that I want to emphasize is we still have our categorical funds, such as Title I, that supports our struggling learners and families or students of low income. Title III, English learners. Title II, which provides professional development money. And Title IV, which is primarily focused on social emotional support. So there's a lot of restricted categorical funds that will continue to provide services, and we will make sure that they are focused on its intended purpose. The other thing that was one of the touchstones back in 2009 that we've continued to utilize is this very thoughtful approach of looking at the budget from a very surgical analytical standpoint, so that we're just not making blanket across-the-board cuts, but really looking at where we can cut with the least amount of impact. And the other thing that's unique about this crisis is the fact that there are some things that we had budgeted, that we had planned to do, that we cannot do. So there are certain things that have been delayed or reduced as a result of what we anticipate is coming up in this new fiscal year. And so, as well as what, support or not support, again, in this environment. So that allowed us the ability to pull back on some of our budget areas. And finally, this is one of the most important aspects that when we talk about the large numbers that Jeff has put on this slide, that is our budget challenge, typically districts are looking at layoffs. And as we know, some of our neighboring districts will unfortunately be forced to do layoffs. And what I want to share with the board today is the fact that we believe we can weather this budget cut in this year, at this time, with, based on what we know, and to avoid layoffs here in Newport Mesa. And we need to be prepared, not just for the short term, but also be prepared for mid-year cuts in case things get worse or, or a cut that will last multiple years. So with that, I wanted to provide that background in some of our thought process leading to the recommendation that Jeff will be sharing in just a moment.
Great. I have, I have two hands up. And Ms. Snell has a question on this current slide.
Thank you, Martha. This is the same slide that we saw in the first budget presentation as worst case. So I am assuming that the MSA of 7.6 million is confirmed we're going to lose. But is the balance confirmed, or is that your, your projection?
That, that's our projection in that things are not looking good for the state right now. The information that's coming out of Sacramento is, is not good.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I, I wanted to know that. I wasn't sure if it was, if it was in ink or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, is your question on any of the previous slides or this slide? Or do you want to hold it to, to the end?
Yes, mine is about a previous slide. I wanted to ask, we, Jeff had mentioned something about us not borrowing from the county for cash during July to December. But isn't that what we typically do when it's a regular budget year? So what would be the concern with doing it this year, if it's something we use typically?
The district for years has not borrowed money to get through the cash drive period. It used to issue a tax revenue anticipation note. We used to do that regularly every year. But for the past 10 years or so, we have, we have not done that. We have simply borrowed from our other funds within the district to make that happen. And that's been absolutely wonderful in that it's saved us a lot of money not having to borrow from the county or to issue a trans.
How much would it cost us to issue one this year?
Well, if, depends on how much we borrow. But it's in, you know, we have to hire attorneys, financial advisors, bond counsel, these kinds of things, and it's in the range of a couple hundred thousand dollars to do so.
So if we borrowed 13.5 based on this slide? Okay. And then my other question is, one of the, when it, we were, when the slide came up that was showing the projections from the recession years, one of the things that I noticed when I was comparing the 2010, 11 budget, which is as far back as I have, was the property tax amount was far different than it is in the 2019, 20 interim budget that we received. So it was 176.6 million in 2010. And now, as of 2019, 20 interim, it's 296. So, I mean, we're in 100, we're not in the same place. There's a lot of different variables, as Russell said, that makes it unique. But I mean, we are in a much better place if we're 120 million plus, receiving more for property taxes than we were, you know, 10 years ago. Correct?
Yes, that's, that's true. Revenues have, have gone up as so have expenses.
Okay. One of the other things that I had a question about too, before we moved on, it was my understanding at the previous budget meeting that we had, well, I know I had asked for different departments, excuse me, to cut 5% or 10% or what that would look like. So I, I haven't received anything that shows that. So I'm a little concerned when you move to the next slide. And there are things on there that include program cuts, because I don't feel like we have necessarily, as a board, received information that departments are doing enough cutting. So before we cut anything programmatically, I would like to see what it looks like for 5%, what it looks like for 10% for each of our departments. Particularly some of our departments like transportation, who, if we're doing partial hybrid classes, we're not going to be using as much transportation. That's in the millions. So 13.5 is not a lot for us to make up. I would rather see us be creative and find other ways to get that money back rather than cutting program costs as, like, making a recommendation today. I don't think we're there yet. That's what I wanted to share. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Well, a couple of things that she's, that Ashley's pointed out that the public probably is interested in knowing as well. Could you talk to us about the trans and what we have to pay interest on that money? Is that correct? So there's an increase besides, besides the initial applying for it. I mean, we have great credit rating, which is terrific. But there is an ongoing cost to borrowing that money. Correct?
That's correct. It's very expensive to go to the market to borrow the money. You know, it's a very retail kind of thing, and it's short-term borrowing, so that even adds to the cost. So it is, it's an expensive proposition to do. And if we can avoid it, it's very helpful. We do save a lot of money.
And then could you go back to the slide where you talk about the surgical reductions? And explain what you mean by surgical? I think there was a slide here that you, you, or is it coming up?
It's the next one. That's why, yeah, that's why-
Yeah. Target, major touchstones for cuts, target surgical reduction. Could you explain what surgical? I think it's expanding on what Russell said about we, we were really not looking at overall 10% cuts because that could impact different departments. And could you, could you just expand on surgical reductions? And what that means by department?
Yes, so we have actually turned the budget upside down. I wish I could describe to you the, the amount of effort that has gone into this budget. We've actually turned around several budget managers, budget managers' budgets and been working with them and having some very candid and difficult discussions with budget managers about essential and, and what is essential, what, what essential means in year coming up. And so, yeah, there's been some things that have, we've, we've taken out 1.2 million dollars out of transportation for fleet replacement. And we'll get into some of that stuff. But we have actually, you know, some, we have not taken a, how do you say, a, just a 10% or 5% across the board. It's been very custom. And so we're looking at each department, each division, and weighing their budget against the essential. And that is different for every, every division. Maybe perhaps Russell could add a little more color to that.
Right. Well, that, that's exactly it. Quite frankly, it's easy to do, and across the board, everybody takes a certain percentage cut. That, that doesn't require a whole lot of thought and, and analysis. And what Jeff is describing is exactly what has been doing. We had to do that in the end division. Every single division has had to do that. And, and quite frankly, what, what's happening is it's making us reevaluate what is important, what can we move forward with? What, we can't move forward at this point. So when we get to that next slide, you will see a line item regarding surgical reductions, and that's what that is.
Well, Russell, that amount, though, is only 3.1 million. So, I mean, that is, if I'm looking at just the transportation budget alone, I, I, so for me, that's where my concern is. A, this is the first time that I'm hearing that, that there were any cuts across the, across all of, all of the departments of any level. But the surgical budget reductions are only 3.1. That, I mean, that could be one department alone. Could be cutting contractors, could be cutting consultants. Like, that's not a large amount. So that's part of my concern, why we're cutting 2.6 for programs.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that slide in a bit. Maybe we'll add a little more detail when everybody can see that. But, but I also want to mention about transportation. And when we talk about transportation routes, first of all, we need to make sure we understand this is home-to-school. And a lot of our special needs students require and need the transportation. So I didn't mention that earlier, but this is an area that we have continued to support. And quite frankly, if we're looking at savings through the routes that we provide, that does mean layoffs. And we're trying to commit not to do that. And moving into next year with our planning for reopening, we're not quite sure what the transportation needs are. But in some models I've already seen, it might require double, triple, quadruple routes so that kids can be spaced apart within the bus. So-
Well, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. So for instance, there's contract services. The budget amount is 64,000. However, the 2018, 19 estimated actual was 350,000. So if we have in-transportation contract services that are considerably over a budget amount, like, those are the things that I would like to see cut in different departments. I'm just pointing out one. I'm not saying, obviously, we need students transported, that's essential. But the, the extraneous things like contracts and consultants, I am not seeing or hearing that we, we have dealt-
Ashley, I just want to point out that when you talk about those types of contracted services, that's for kids that are going to youth and government, for example. That's our athletic competitions. Those are, those are, those are the contracted because our, our bus drivers may not be taking. That also may in fact include other things. But youth and government takes a bus. So they're going up if they're doing youth and government. If we have athletic competitions, that's not sometimes being done, provided by our transportation because they're going to tournaments.
A lot of things are going to be canceled, though, for next year. So that's where I want to see different contingency plans. Because if several, if MUN is cut for fall, if sports are cut for fall, we don't know that those are going to be back. So I, I, that's why I would like to see varieties of cuts.
But you can't budget for, maybe they'll get cut and maybe they won't. You cut, you budget for the worst-case scenario, so you can add back in when it doesn't happen. We can always add in. But if we don't, a responsible budget thinks of, of the worst case, because otherwise, we're caught going, oh, no, we don't have enough money. And for someone who had to work back in the day, I know, when the district was saying, here, here's a warrant for what your paycheck will be, but we don't have the cash right now. That's a scary thing, and that's affecting our people. This, these are not, we're trying to keep everything away from the people. But you don't, you don't do these cuts on, maybe we won't need it. What if we do? What if everything opens up in the fall? Then we need that money, and we haven't budgeted for it. So-
Well, I'm, yeah, I mean, my, my, what I'm saying is that this contract services for something that may not happen when we are cutting programs that we are planning to have, to me, is a concern. We can move forward on the next slide.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So moving into the recommended solutions. So at the top of that solution are the surgical budget reductions. These are the reductions that are putting off some things, delaying initiatives, these kinds of things that are outside of the classroom, so to speak. We're also delaying funds for facility projects. And perhaps, Tim, would you like to add a little bit of color to that one?
Sure, thanks, Jeff. With, with regard to the, the facility projects, you, you'll recall that the, the board has had some, some very aggressive plans for improvements, and we've made a lot of great improvements. And so what we're currently doing with this is we're basically putting a pause- And so what we're currently doing with this is we're basically putting a pause to things. So that we can, so the district can catch its breath, so to speak, with regard to funding facility projects. So the projects that are critical that the board had previously approved, such as completing the air conditioning projects. Those funds are restricted funds, they're allocated, and those projects will be able to proceed. There are some other projects like that that are under construction or nearly to construction. On the other hand, there were some other projects that were very much in the early planning stages. And those projects are being put on hold right now. And so that allows us to delay the allocation of those funds to those projects. Until times are a little bit better.
Thank you. The next item is using utilizing our risk, risk stabilization account. This is the result of. It's sometimes that we get from our our insurer. So sometimes we'll have a good experience during the course of the year. And so our insurer will come back to us and they'll and say, hey, you've done really well with your risk management. And so we're going to provide you a rebate. And so the board has allowed us to have a risk management stabilization account. And this is can be used in this kind of environment. And so we were going to transfer one and a half million dollars from that account to help during this time. And again, this is a one time kind of thing that we can do to be helpful. The next item is delaying fleet replacement. Of course, you know, we we run a fleet of buses and and maintenance trucks and those kinds of things. And so we can delay fleet replacement. This is a little risky in that if we have a bus go down, that kind of thing. But we've we've saved a little bit in case we have a bus go down, we can, we can replace that. And the next item is workers' compensation, other post employment benefit contribution. So the district has made some obligations to its employees associated with workers' comp and other post employment benefits. These obligations are actuarially determined. In other words, we need to have enough money in the bank, so to speak, to fulfill those obligations. And because the board has been very good about supporting these contributions and make sure that we are fully funded. We believe we can delay for one year contributions to these actuarial determined amounts. And be able to get by with that. So the total non-program equates to 9.8 million dollars. And these are again mostly one time kinds of things that we can do. And this will help us to buy some time to weather this. Now, on the other side that we have, we have the program side. And so let's talk about some of the curricular support items that are in support in nature. And so perhaps Russell or John would like to add some color to these, the these next three items here.
I'll provide a little more detail here. So again, in our analysis, looking at the support that we provide and going back to what I had mentioned earlier. None of these involve layoffs. So the none of these cuts, even though these are significant. Significant savings here to the to the budget does not involve any layoffs. It also does not involve anything related to our staffing ratios, which is also very important going into next year. But these are things that we believe we can reduce and it's not digging into the core. So some at the elementary level, some at the secondary level and some off ratio additional section. I'm sorry, additional support that we provide to our secondary schools, some of our secondary schools. This is not the courses or the core sections that I mentioned earlier in my comments that we are protecting. And then moving on, Jeff, do you want to do declining enrollment first?
Russell, Russell, can you define core for us, please?
Okay. You know, when I say core, I think some people immediately think of the four core subject areas in math, English, science and social studies. But when we talk about core in this context, we are talking about our core instructional program, which also includes our electives. So I just want to make sure that's very clear to the board and to everyone who's listening.
So declining enrollment with the district has been in a declining enrollment for a few years now. And however, next year, given what's happening with Huntington Beach and and with the economy. There's a lot of uncertainty around the enrollment projection. And as such, we've, we feel like we'll still be declining. And so we've scored about a half a million dollars there for declining enrollment. Again, that's not touching class size ratios or anything like that. This is just simply to the impact of declining enrollment on us. And this is about five teachers district wide. That's what that means. The next item is the summer program and most of this is involuntary, right, Russell, the summer program? It's it's.
Yeah, this is unfortunately some programs that we typically offer that we're not able to offer due to our current situation with COVID-19.
And then the next item is professional development. And what you need to know about this, this professional development number is is unrestricted only. So it's it's the, it's the professional development that's very discretionary. And 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 part of it too is that, you know, we, we can't have a lot of people in the same room. And so a lot of this is is a little bit involuntary also in that what so. This, what this means is we'll still be having professional development, but it's not going to be at the at the level that we've had it in the past. And perhaps Russell may want to add some to that.
Right. And I mentioned earlier that our categorical funds, particularly Title II, is all about professional development. So that will, but we believe the PD can be cut back to this level.
So overall, the total program there is about 2.7 million dollars. So we have total solutions of 12.5 million. And that still leaves us with a deficit of 1.1 million to deal with. And and into, we're going to deal with that. However, we're in a good place in terms of of the district financially speaking. And so we we think we can, we can deal with that going forward.
Jeff, may I ask a question?
Yes.
When we previously talked about this, the professional development amount was 98,000. And I'm seeing here that it's 324,000. How did that number change? What is the? It looks like the total program amount is the same, yet it was 98 before and now it's 324.
Good, good question. What what I did is I just combined the professional development has is made up of two parts. There's the cost of the development itself. And then there's the cost of bringing in subs to take the place for teachers who are in the development. And so that 98,000 was the cost for the development, the balance was the cost of bringing in the subs. I just combined the two.
How is the amount though the same then? But I mean, that makes it, that makes sense for why it's 324, but the total program amount didn't change. From 98 to 324.
Well, maybe I'm missing, I'm sorry, maybe not connecting. The 98,000 is the cost for the professional development itself. And then we're going, I added the cost for the subs to bring that up to 324. So there was in the past.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, so all of the items are the same from when we looked at it two weeks ago. The 254, the 983, 426, 501, 90. But the the if we're adding in. Oh, I'm sorry. I see, I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I see.
So we still have a little work to do to close the deficit. And we look forward to bringing those solutions to you soon. So with that, then our next steps, we're going to be assessing the governor's June adopted budget. We're going to look at again our multi-year assumptions and projections. We're going to prepare for possible August revised state budget. The the state is is projecting that they are in trouble, that they they don't know what their receipts are. Because they pushed the income tax deadline to July 15. And so they're projecting that they could come out with a revised budget in August. And so we will prepare for that and make sure we're prepared. We will also then make some recommended changes at first interim. And with that, then I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Karen, your light went, you're not your light, but your hand went up and then it went down. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes, it went down only because I was going to just mention and and obviously Jeff got to this. That we still don't know. There's going to be a June budget and then there's going to be an August revise. So looking optimistically, maybe there'll be something else coming along. And at that point, I'm assuming that we can then add back in things that we maybe had considered cutting. We wouldn't be at the stage where they'd be gone forever.
That's true.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes. So my question is, we had, we can't do the summer programs regardless because, you know, we our our schools are not yet opened again. What about funding for English language development, that kind of summer support that we're going to need to do? That's going to be an additional cost. Have we evaluated that in the budget? Are we weighing that, you know, how does that part play in?
Right. And that's what I mentioned earlier. That is absolutely important and needed and will be supported in the budget. You know, relatively speaking, that's, you know, it's not going to make up for 13.6 or or impact us. We will make sure that that's supported. That is a priority. And I also want to mention along those lines, when I talked about the the summer program reduction and some of the programs that we cannot offer. That doesn't mean that we are not offering any summer support. We are still moving forward with credit recovery support. There will be options for our kids at the second to have access to credit recovery options. That's very important for people to know. We will provide the summer support for incomplete students with incompletes based on the credit recommendations. And then, as you mentioned, any type of targeted learning loss over the summer definitely would be supported. We are working on that. But I just want to also emphasize that the learning loss is not going to be recovered in a short summer program. That's just the tip of the iceberg and it really needs to be an ongoing support.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Respectfully, Russell, I disagree. We used to have ELD programs that were really robust in our district. I'm not sure that we are seriously considering what needs to happen for our elementary students who are our most vulnerable students. I'm really concerned that I continue to hear things about secondary, secondary, secondary. And we are not hearing enough about intervention plans for students that are in elementary. It is not sufficient to just wait for the fall. We have kids who hypothetically will have significant loss from March until August 24. It's our responsibility to care for them. I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned if we're cutting 130 from the summer, the summer program for the engineering that was in place before. I mean, this is something that I've brought up a few times and so I'm a little frustrated to hear like, nope, we're not doing it. Because I think there are a few of us on the board that have asked for more information and given direction around that. So I think there's possibilities for summer school to be, even if it's partially hybrid. Like, that is an option. We, I mean, we have kids that need intervention this summer in elementary school for English, language arts and math. It's essential. Those are, that's something that is critical. It's not something that's like, this is an extra pie in the sky thing. So I mean, we have very robust reserves. We have been, we have been saving and that things have been really kept under wraps and I, that is great. We need to use them during this emergency for our elementary students who are in our Title I schools. I really, I'm very uncomfortable with, oh, well, we're just not going to do anything. That's not, that's not okay.
Russell?
Mrs. Anderson, first of all, if I gave the impression that we're not doing anything, I need to correct that. It's not what I've hopefully said.
I haven't heard what we're doing at all. We haven't, there has been no communication about a plan for our elementary students.
I I said that this is an. I'm sorry, I I'm saying that this is an area we are currently working on, that this is critically important. But I'm also making the point that the summer program does not solve the problem. But I believe, and you have, you have heard me say how important it is that we do provide some targeted support for the students. Particularly the ones with the with this, with the deep needs. What, and I should probably be more specific to everybody. When we talk about a program that we can't provide, that is the enrichment program. That is the music enrichment program that we provide and the engineering academy program that we provide. And that does really hurt in terms of not being able to provide that this summer. But we are definitely committed to restoring that next year. And our focus should be, as Mrs. Anderson, as you said, should be on the kids that have the greatest needs. And so we should focus our support and time and resources on providing that as soon as possible. And that is a program and a plan that we are working on. So if I gave any impression to you or any other board member that we're not doing something in that area, I want to correct that right now.
Thank you. It hasn't been communicated at all. It's very concerning to me. So thank you.
Ms. Anderson, I'm, I certainly understand your frustration, but at the same time, I think Russell has prefaced this and Dr. Navarro and all that has spoken. Throughout all of our communications, that this is a work in progress. And you are dealing with, first of all, the immediate need right now is making sure that those individuals at the high school level that are in fear of failing and receiving no credit for graduation, which are 12th graders. We want to make sure that those are targeted first.
But no, we need to have, we can have a two pronged approach.
Actually, I have not finished yet. As I believe that Vanessa Gailey has also has been tasked with all of this. They're working on it, Dr. Navarro, perhaps at our June 9 board meeting. There can be a presentation if there is at least a tentative draft of what we're doing in terms of learning loss and for our K-12 or TK-12 program. Perhaps we can have a presentation or a discussion about that at that, at that meeting.
I mean, I have not heard a peep about Vanessa targeting elementary. I have not heard anything. So I, I appreciate you sharing that, Martha, but we have, we haven't heard anything as a board and it's May 29. So the day that school gets out, I have parents asking me constantly, what are we doing for students in the summer? Particularly my student who needs intervention. And I can't give them an answer and I haven't even heard that we are discussing it or that Vanessa has a plan. Or I mean, we need to get this out to parents as soon as possible.
Thank you. We have discussed, Ashley, I think, you know, you missed a couple meetings and.
No, I missed one. We had one that was missbilled. We, it was not.
For missing it. I'm just explaining that there has been a lot of disgust. And perhaps you missed that because I, I remember hearing about this in updates. And that's all. I'm just giving you a possible explanation.
We haven't heard anything. We get daily updates and I've been asking about elementary for two months.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you what I have.
Great.
Madam President, could I just share?
Madam President, could I just share a little bit on that, on what, on what we're doing? So I think we have to be careful of the assumptions that we make are not the same assumptions we made prior to COVID-19. The assumptions are different and we had our principals in today and you heard them talk about the different things they're thinking about and how we're operating differently. So the assumption can't be that we're going to have face-to-face instruction this summer with all kids. Okay? That's part of the complication. So let me give you one example of what I've heard. And this is, these are details we're working on and we have no complete plan yet. So we're building this one brick at a time. And as frustrating as that might be for, for people, we need to, we need to make sure all the details are understood completely before we can come out with a full plan. So
We have to communicate with parents that we're in progress. We've heard that over and over from parents. Parents want to know that we are actually thinking about something and putting together a plan before everything is completed.
I, that's what I'm expressing to you, Ms. Anderson, that I was going to use one example. The one example is that very effective partnership we have at Cal State Fullerton with the English learner program. And some of you visited in the summer. Well, how are we going to run that program if we can't do it face-to-face? And how's, how's the university going to partner with us? So there's an example of something we're working on where we have major questions we have to resolve. And I think we have to, I think it'd be safe to assume that we're not in the same scenario that we have in the past. We are going to have programs. We are working on them. We need to understand the details. It will come out with to you, we will come out to you with, with what those are as soon as we've understood what the complexities are. The last thing we need is to provide a half-baked program. And we want to make sure that we're doing our best. So we will, we are getting there. I want to reassure you that what Mr. Lee Sung is, said is accurate. We are working on it. It is a work in progress and we will get the information out as soon as we possibly can.
And again, I think we have to remember that it goes, it goes across the district. There are needs in every single one of our schools in terms of addressing learning loss. And, and we have intervention teachers in all of our schools now. And so we, we have to look at it from a, from a district-wide point of view.
We do, but we have to address equity and it's, elementary equity is something that we constantly skip over. So for me, it is crucial. It's why I'm on this board because I continue to not hear robust enough plans. We have to communicate with the community that we're even considering this. Because honestly, until right now, I haven't heard anything about summer. So, thank you.
I think you're incorrect, Ashley, but we'll keep moving on. Okay, moving on. Are there any other questions?
Martha, I'm not incorrect and it's really frustrating that you always have to talk back to everything I say. I have not had plans. I've asked about it over and over again.
You keep, you keep making comments that in my
Do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
That they're not incorrect and you always try and rebut everything that I say. It's not okay.
Thank you. Moving on. Dr. Navarro?
Mr. Lee Sung, follow-up on the presentation? Anything else you want to add?
Well, I just go back to where Jeff ended his presentation. There's still a lot more work to do. There will be a budget report on June 9th that he'll be working on. And we need to provide a budget by the end of the month in June. So still a lot of unknowns, still a lot of work to do. But overall, I just want to make sure that we all are mindful of the fact that we're looking at a $13.6 million challenge. And we are committing at this point not to do layoffs. It doesn't mean that there's some temp positions or some positions that may not be filled temporarily, but we are weathering this major budget crisis with minimal impact. And I think that's very important as an organization, we should be proud of that we were in a very good position financially going into the crisis, which makes all the difference in the world. And I do feel for our neighbors in other districts who may have been living on the, we're going to have to really have some very catastrophic cuts in their, in their school district. So hopefully overall, there will be good news in the future, but unfortunately, there's still a lot of unknowns that we need to be prepared for.
Russell, and I want to share with the board that yesterday we had, we did have a meeting with our association presidents. We had a meeting with Pam Saunders and with Britt Dr. Doughty. This is nothing new. It's been shared with, in fact, it's been shared with both, both association presidents. Russell and Leona have been meeting weekly, sometimes daily with our association presidents regarding the budget. So they are very well apprised. And again, I want to reiterate the fact that we are working together to deal with this. They, they know our position. We have talked to that about that. But Russell has not mentioned also one other thing. While he's committed also to, and this board is committed to no layoffs, we're also maintaining our commitment to no combos. Correct, Russell? You want to expand? Do you want to expand about that too and our class sizes?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Flor. So I did mention we are not adjusting our staffing ratios. We're maintaining our staffing ratios and practices. And our current practice, which we're very proud of in this district, is our commitment at the elementary level not to have combos, except for some TK-K combos. But other than that, we have stayed away from combos. And we feel it's particularly important in this environment where we may be in distance learning, that we not go there. So we are going to hold on to that as long as we can because we really take pride and we know that that's important for our students and our teachers.
Great. And then, so just for the public, on June 9th, Jeff, I do have a question because we heard yesterday that the Senate and the Assembly, they are not interested in passing this new budget, you know, Governor Newsom's budget. For the first time, it appears that there are coalitions being built between the Assembly and the, and the Senate in terms of working together. They're not interested in this. Can you elaborate on that? So do you think that we're going to have another showdown with, because they're, the Assembly and the Senate have basically said, we're not cutting to education. And they're particularly upset about the million dollars of masks that the governor has, has put in that budget. So can you address that at all?
That's, that's an interesting development that's happened recently. And I think we just need to remember that historically, the budget is the governor's. And the governor has a lot of control over this. And so I'm not sure, I think perhaps this is a way of the legislature trying to put some pressure on the governor to make a few changes. So we may see a few changes, but I would not bet that we're going to see wholesale changes from what the governor has proposed already.
Great. Ms. Matoye, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. We are fortunate to have two budget, rephrase, two board meetings in June due to our budget adoption processes. So while our total fiscal information may change after June 19th because Mr. Trader, doesn't the budget have to be proposed by June 15th in the legislature? So I'm expecting to perhaps have another update on the June 23rd board meeting. That's my question. Two, actually, actually two questions. The 15th and the 23rd.
Yeah, so in the first meeting in June, we will have a public hearing for the budget. And so we will have the entire budget done by that first meeting in June for the public to comment on that, you to comment on the budget. And, and then we will adopt the budget on the 23rd. So yes, there, perhaps there could, you know, if there, if there were dramatic changes to the state's June 15th budget, perhaps, you know, we might see an emergency meeting happening where we would make some changes in between there. But I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't see changes between the hearing and the adoption with that.
Fingers crossed. Oops, I'm sorry, my question. Thank you. So fingers crossed that, but, but the budget will be announced by the state government on June 15th.
Correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Anderson. Ms. Anderson?
Sorry, I thought that you were done. I didn't realize you were taking a breath. I apologize. Next week, there is a town hall about education in our area. And Kevin, who is the Assemblyman who's in charge of the Education Chair at the Department for the Assembly, will be open to us telling and explaining what we would like. So there is an opportunity in the next two weeks for things to change dramatically. So I mean, that's something too that can change that I think we need to be kind of keeping our pulse on.
Yeah, we all got the invitation. It's for board members as well as superintendents. It was announced. Thank you. All right, moving on. So we are going to recess into closed session. We have a closed session item is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated legal litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 of subdivision D of the Government Code, section 54956.91, potential case, delay in proceeding with security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Enson Intermediate School. We will go into closed session is anticipated that we will reconvene at 12:30 into open session. So we will recess into closed session at this point in time. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We are back in, in open session. There was a vote taken. Mrs. Snell moved and Mrs. Matoye seconded to not, the motion was to read as not delay in proceeding with the security fencing and drop-off slash parking lot project at Enson Intermediate School. And the vote was as follows. Yes, Flor. Yes, Matoye. Yes, Snell. Yes, Yelsey. The noes were Ms. Anderson, no. Ms. Barto, no. Ms. Black, no. So the motion carried 7-3. I mean, 4-3. My math. I was under new math. Okay, so it's 4-3. So moving on back into discussion action calendar, item 8A, which is to approve the revisions to the security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Enson Middle School. Mr. Holcomb, would you like to talk about this, please?
President Flor, as you know, this project at Enson Intermediate School has been the subject of a lot of discussion. And back in February, or in April, I'm sorry, we conducted a thought exchange project to get the input of the community about the project. We received a great deal of response to that. More than 400 people participated in the thought exchange. And through that process, we identified four different opportunities to revise the project and enhance the project. We have put those four in this agenda item for you to consider and have set aside the budget to fund these if the board so chooses to move forward. We recommend approval of the motion. If you have any questions, Otto Zerestee and I are both available to answer them.
All right. I think it would be nice for the public to hear what those enhancements and revisions are. Could you enumerate them, please?
Sure. So what we have described in the board item that we heard from the thought exchange in the modifications portion, and I'll just say a little bit more about the thought exchange. The, there were some major top-rated priorities, which number one was of course, safety. But there was also the modifications portion and we looked at each and every one of those items and considered those items regardless of their rating. So we didn't just pick the ones highly, highly rated. And what we derived out of that information was to come up with a few items here that we've listed. The first that was important to the community and the school site was preservation of the memorial tree. And so in this item, we are anticipating to have the tree remain. And we will build around the tree to make sure that that occurs. The second item was for any tree that is removed due to the project, that at a minimum, we would look at replacing that tree on campus, one to one. And that's at a minimum. We may come up with a plan that develops into something else. The third item that we're proposing here is to create additional outdoor gathering areas for the students where it could be kind of an outdoor classroom. And so we'll work with the school site on where the best location that is on campus to offset some of the needs of just outdoor space. And our intent on this one is really to shift the school's activities from immediately adjacent to the street and rather bring them interior to the campus. And so that likely will be where the majority of these replacement trees would go. But they may be distributed out through the site. We'll work with the school site on what best serves the students' needs. And then last item here that we're proposing is to do any additional landscaping or plantings along the edge of the Cliff Drive lot. And we would have to work with the city on that item. Currently in the city right-of-way, there are some trees. They're not all quite uniform in the city right-of-way. So we would offer to plant trees or bushes adjacent to our parking lot as a buffer between the lot and the sidewalk and the street. And so we'll offer that and we'll have to work with the city on that item. But that essentially was what we heard through the thought exchanges modifications to the project.
Great. Thank you. The only question that we have had come up is the community meeting, was it recorded?
Yes, and it's being, it's being converted so it can be posted.
And so, and all the comments will be posted as well?
Yes. And so they're attached to this board item already in public. And so we'll update our construction page and the project page on the website. And we will have the video and the comments available until the project's complete.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so may I have a motion to put this on the, on the, on, on the table? So moved. Vicky? Mrs. Snell moved? Is there a second?
Yelsey.
Ms. Yelsey seconded it. Any discussion?
Can I propose a secondary motion?
Okay.
My secondary motion is to approve the enhancements as the previous project is, has been voted on to proceed, as previously directed.
I'm not sure what the difference is.
It's just wording.
Okay, so is she amending my motion then?
Well, we didn't state what the exact motion was.
Oh, I know, I know. But I made the original motion and you're amending the motion. The original motion was just actually to approve the amendments as stated, but I don't quite understand your motion. It's just the wording you prefer. Could you say it again?
Sure. I, my propose to approve the enhancements based on the project proceeding as originally proposed, something like that. I can't quite...
Can I make a suggestion to approve the revisions and enhancements? Would it be okay if that, does that, I mean, I'm not sure that...
May I guess at a clarification?
Thank you, Cheryl.
I think what Mrs. Barto would like to do is say, hey, I got outvoted on stopping this. So, as long as we're moving along as directed, then I want the enhancements if we're going to have to do it that way, right?
Yes.
But I think that's what it says here. The original motion is the revision, which includes the enhancements.
Okay, I will with...
A note to it being a...
Okay. I will withdraw my motion and Michelle can, Mrs. Barto can go forward with hers.
Thank you. Can I use Charlene's wording? Thank you. You have more practice than...
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
Under the guidelines of the project moving forward...
Make the motion.
The motion is, we move that since the project got voted to move forward, we will recommend the project revisions as stated in the board agenda.
Thank you. That, that's what I...
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I'll, it's, okay, the motion is to approve the revisions to the, it is...
No.
For the, the already, the approved project.
The already approved project has to come first. The motion is, as the board has voted to, to not delay the project.
The motion. You have to make a motion simple.
I did. I move that since the board voted to not delay the project, we approve the rec, project revisions as stated in the agenda.
I'll second. Thank you.
I wish we had our attorney still here.
It's recording. We can, you can, we can go back.
Well, yeah, or I think, I mean, it could be helpful to have something where like, if it's the board majority, like, it was based, you know, like, because the way that it's worded this way, sounds like it was 7-0.
That is not part of a motion. A motion is a simple statement of project. So, I, I cannot, you cannot qualify that by saying, since the board voted on a previous motion. That is not approved. You have to be very clear on a motion. So, you can say, approve the revisions and enhancements to the current security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Enson Intermediate School. And the word, the change would be current or approved, previously approved project.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so...
Michelle, you make that.
All right, so, Ms. Barto...
Can I, can I, can I have a motion for discussion? I think we need to be clear on the language and I feel like we're not clear on it. So, are, are we all clear?
We'll have discussion. It's still, it's up for discussion. We haven't, the motion, she's just making the motion. After that, there can be further discussion.
Right, okay, fine.
Okay, so the motion is, Ms. Barto moved...
I can say, I move to approve the revisions to the current plan.
Second.
Okay. Okay, the motion, okay, the motion's been made by Ms. Barto. It has been seconded by Ms. Matoye. Roll call. Further discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Flor.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey. Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
And Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
The motion carries seven, zero. Thank you all for the discussion. A couple of reminders, please. I have received two. I have not received the rest of your selections on the recorded video for graduations. I need to have those post haste. I have received from Ms. Yelsey, Ms. Matoye, and Ms. Anderson. Your suggestion...
I sent you mine.
Yes, you did. Me too. I saw that.
I haven't gotten it. I will check...
I saw it. I saw it.
That one.
Okay, so Ms., where's Ms., Ms. Snyder? Have you received them?
I saw the emails and I have Yelsey, Snell, Barto, Black, Matoye.
Okay. I have, I got, I have Anderson's. I saw Anderson's. Okay, perfect. Thank you. We'll get back to you within this, this afternoon to let you know because the recording for the middle schools is June 2nd. And so, we will adjourn. We are meeting again back with, for a COVID update with Dr. Navarro after this.
Ms. Flor, I recommend that you allow me to send you a new, a new invitation for this one on the emergency COVID update because I'm not sure the old one will work. So, if you don't mind taking a 10-minute break?
Perfect. Okay, so I have, may I have motion to adjourn, please?
So, moved.
So, we don't want to have any discussion about it. Okay.
Well, Mrs., Mrs. Flor called for discussion and no one said anything.
I have my, had my hand raised, but it's fine. It already, I mean, I, I thought it would be appropriate to have the three people who voted against it to discuss why, but that had already passed, so...
I apologize, but I...
I voted this way.
I apologize because I didn't see your hand either. Your hand isn't up. I, and I keep this...
Hands up.
Hands up all the time.
It was up.
Discussion. I apologize, Ms. Anderson, but I didn't see your hand, nor did I, no one spoke out, so, okay.
Thanks.
All right, so, we will take a 10-minute break and go back into COVID update.